I'd like to call to order the special meeting of the Paradise Irrigation District on Thursday, August the 28th at eight oh two AM. And please stand with me and pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under our, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Director Corolla?
Here.
Vice President Hadd?
Here.
President Decker?
Here.
Director Flusher?
Here.
Okay, we're gonna move right to four, closed session, conference with labor negotiations, district negotiating team regarding labor negotiations with the employee general unit represented by IBEW, Local 1245, and the management unit pursuant to the government code of five four nine five seven point six. Anybody wants to speak about going to closed session? Seeing none, we will go.
Bring it out.
Bring in.
You're right.
You handed out handouts?
I haven't handed out yet.
Oh, there are no handouts. This is the union. I think she has.
I knew we were moving in here.
See my car?
The thunderbird?
Yeah.
Oh, is that yours Larry? I like that.
Oh, easy to get into.
It is.
Isn't it?
No. Point your head down.
Hi, Georgia Anna.
Good point.
Direction was given to our negotiator, and that's all that happened in closed session. And now we will go to approval of the consent calendar.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar as presented.
Second.
Any discussion?
Do we wait for Doug to come back?
Yep. We don't have to.
We're gonna wait until he comes back.
You would.
Yeah.
Okay, what about you, Sepp?
He's the only reason he had to go to the bathroom, and this one was long, so...
Somebody was in there.
Yeah.
Any... Sepp, any discussion?
I'm good.
I'm, uh...
No discussion by me.
Right. Due to the... What's the word?
Temporary absence.
In removing the appearance of a conflict of interest?
In order to remove the conflict of... The appearance of a conflict of interest, I'm going to abstain from two A in my vote. You wish to talk to anything on the consent agenda?
Do we need to make a determination, Larry, that you have a conflict of interest?
No. We don't have to. I'm just saying that I'm going to abstain because I don't want to fill the appearance of it.
Yeah, but the rules... The rules say that under certain circumstances, when you abstain, then it's not a vote. But if there is not a clear conflict, then I believe that it is a vote in the affirmative. Remember?
I think... Yeah, but I think if he declares a potential conflict, then that's as good as a conflict.
Okay. We're taking your word for it, Larry.
It's actually an abstention and not an affirmative.
Right. Okay. Okay. All those in favor of...
Does Doug know where we are?
Yeah, yeah, I asked him.
Okay.
Anybody in the audience wish to speak to the... Anything on the consent agenda? Consent calendar? Nothing? Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
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 One abstention on the... For me, on two A.
And what was your vote on two B?
Aye. I said an aye. Yeah. Okay, and so it passes five oh on B and four with one extension on A. Okay. Public participation. Individuals will be given an opportunity to address the board regarding matters not scheduled on the agenda. All the board cannot take action on any matter not on the agenda. Comments will be limited to five minutes per speaker. Opportunity for public comment or agenda items will be provided at the time they are discussed by the board, with comments limited to five minutes for agenda item. Is there anyone who wishes to speak to something that is not on the agenda? Please come forward.
I apologize ahead of time, Lauren Harvey, Paradise resident. I apologize ahead of time, I'm still on this, uh... This golf, um, education. Uh, I noticed that you abstained from the vote for A, and I was wondering, how come Mr. Hunt didn't abstain from the vote to vote his own money and to go on this trip? Because that was a... That's a conflict of interest, 'cause he benefits from it, and I feel that he should've not voted on that. And so, I'd just like to tell the board that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, we'll go on to, um... We already had the announcement from closed session. Old business, process water recycle project. First is the presentation by Director Kellogg on alternative using a man-made wetland.
Actually, Larry, it's a constructed wetland.
Constructed, okay.
It's real important that that name be respected that way.
Okay. You have the floor.
I'm gonna speak from here, 'cause that way I can speak to everybody and look at everybody, rather than... I actually thought the podium is sort of a thing, 'cause the people sitting behind it can't really listen or see the gestures or... Wetlands. I... When I started into this thing, it was just a idea that came out of an old trial done at UC Davis for ag use. So I was greatly ignorant of all the different uses of wetlands. And I was naive, because I expected that staff or engineering firms that were involved would actually do some research on their own. And that hasn't happened. The definition of a wetland is very important, in that it is consisting of... Ponds would be probably the easiest way to visualize it, with plants, animals, and other things growing on it. Wetlands come in all shapes and sizes and depth and so forth. Different materials go into them, depending on the problem that's involved. Now, why do I keep talking about wetlands? It's simply cost, cost, and cost. Building in long-term wetlands, two to three feet deep, will be cheaper than any mechanical solution we can come up with. Well, settling ponds could take out the aluminum problem, and the wetlands will help with that, vertical wetlands, they're called. The wetlands will do in the chemicals. I talked to an engineer the last couple of days, who works for C2M Hill Firm, and they do... Have done all sorts of wetlands around the United States and different places, have lots of experience. So he gave me some insights into this, and he basically said, in most cases where wetlands were adopted, there was a period of education and understanding that had to be put into it, because the resistance in the normal engineering industry is great, and there's a lot of ignorance, a lot of not-knowledge and lack of experience. So, we can comply with the NPDES permit with the wetlands. It's within fifty feet of the wetlands, this engineer's telling me we can get rid of the DCBM. That's one reason that little trial in the creek worked on such a small area. Aluminum and so forth. But keep in mind that the DCBM is listed as a cancer-causing chemical. It isn't just for the fish, it's for human beings. There's been rat studies and so forth on it. One of our friends in our church, as Doug and I, has... Is a retired chemist, and he brought this to our information and showed the description of it, and where it was listed as one of those chemicals. The aluminum studies with human consumption of it excess result in human brain damage. And also, there's ideas that it actually... What's the disease that we're all scared of when we get in old age?
Alzheimer's?
Alzheimer's can be a precursor for Alzheimer's. It's not proven, it's just thought of as part of it. So, the problem is sizing the wetlands for the flows of water and so forth. So an engineering study of wetlands by a firm that really has experience would be appropriate. Now, how are these things used today? When I got on the... First started looking at wetlands on the internet, I came up with maybe seven pages of information and references now. Now it's over twenty-seven pages and growing. There is some of it's redundant, but a lot of it is new information that was published in two thousand thirteen and fourteen. They're used in sewage plants, home septic tank systems where they fail. They're used in potable water, such as our situation here. There's not a lot of it, but you can find it. They're used to clean up rivers. In Southern California, they take the... Divert the San Yana River into a very large wetland, it may be the largest in the world, and they clean all the things out of it, and then drop it back in to the water treatment plant. So it's a pre-treatment. There's also, what I've talked about, is called polishing wetlands, where you take the treated material as after it comes out of a sediment basin or whatever, and you run it through a wetland, the final treatment. And some places, wetlands are used to percolate and refresh aquifers. The other use for them is wildlife, public. In Chico, they have public visitation out of their sewage plant into their wetlands. People come out to watch the birds. They also... There's a wetlands in Stockton, it's used the same way, and again, it's become a place where people go to watch wildlife. I'm gonna read to you somewhere... This is a multi-purpose constructed wetlands, and they started out looking at six hundred acres, and it's been less than that. Hemet San Jacinto, multi-purpose constructed wetlands, high-quality wetlands, eliminating the need for construction of other wetlands. And this is from the State of California Water Quality Board. This is in California. The basis objects of the San Jacinto Valley Water Regional Water Reclamation Facility. They've also used this facility for research into wetlands and how they can be managed and used. And it's published research, and I'll read from part of their report now. Public and educational use of the wetlands, as well as offering wetlands as a site for research by others, provides recognition for the district, referring to this district, not our district, but theirs. Advances science, provides an opportunity to share technology, is low-cost, and provides tangible and intangible public benefits. Articles and research papers on the Hemet San Jacinto, multi-purpose constructed wetlands and adjacent wetlands research facility that have been nationally and internationally published. Talk about this, research on wetlands that's going on all over the world, they're going in different directions, different uses, it's amazing what they've come up with. There's a company called Fall Creek Engineering in California, down in the Bay Area, and they have projects from small camps to larger scales with wetlands. There's a firm in California. The other firm I mentioned, CH2M Hill, actually has an office in Redding and has a wetland specialist who is out of Oakdale and can travel the area. They have been involved in, I don't know how many wetlands, 'cause I mentioned Stockton, like it was... Oh yeah, Stockton, like it was nothing at all. So there are a lot of these wetlands in the state, used for different reasons. It's not a new technology. Actually, it's very, very old. When we go to old sediments and pull out ancient ferns and other water-loving plants that've been made into carbon into coal, and that's a wet... Probably a wetland there at one time or another, because of the nature of the plants. The reason created wetlands were developed to begin with was they couldn't manipulate the natural wetlands to do certain things. They needed to do things. Some of these wetlands are created to take nitrogen, high nitrogen and phosphorus out of the water, others, other things, so... Any rate, so we've come to constructed wetlands. It's not an old... It's an old thing that man's got a hold of now, and they're being used. Why are they being used, even by huge water districts that are all over the country? Is cost, cost, cost. They're cheaper to maintain and operate than a mechanical thing that we're gonna be looking at today. So, that's why I keep coming back. It works, our little trial, but then talking to an engineer who's had experience with it, telling me it works naturally, it can do what we need done. The NPDES permit, we've talked about that quite a bit. Jim was nice enough to figure out the costs yesterday, it's about forty-nine thousand a year to maintain an NPDES permit. I leaned on a lot of different people asking information and stuff, I'm not ignorant anymore, and I'm certainly not naive about the process that goes on here. But the idea this morning was to educate you to what wetlands can do, and take away a lot of false pretensions about using them, and they can't be used here and so forth and so on. They can be used here, they can be effective, and they can save the district a lot of money. That's it. Any questions from anybody?
I have a clarification question. Have any of the wetlands been used to do what we're requiring of the wetland?
Yes.
There's a place?
I don't know the exact place, but talking to the engineer, it's there. If you wanna get on the internet and look up constructed wetlands, then you will find all the references, and you could find that. I stopped at twenty-seven pages.
But there's one that is doing process water?
Yes, process water. You'll find references to it, you'll find experiments to it, and so forth.
In California?
Yeah, I think so. I'm not positive about in California. We have the... The Stockton one is at the end of a sewage treatment plant, and in my mind, that's what we're gonna develop, is a sewage treatment plant. And that's... Works there. There's one in Chico, it's the end of a sewage treatment plant, that cleans up water, lets water go back into the aquifer. So, yeah, you can find it. I've given up on hours now, I must have walked ten or twenty hours into this thing. But I wanted to dispel a lot of stuff that's been said about the, um, wetlands, constructed wetlands.
Okay.
I have a couple of comments.
Okay.
I have no excuse for not doing this, because I lived in that community, I had a couple of businesses there. Ubah City, I taught there at the high school back in the sixties, and the city water at that particular time was absolutely horrible, because of the minerals and the high sulfur and was horrible. In fact, with the shop that I taught at, at the high school there on Franklin, you couldn't tell the difference between the urinals and the wash basin smell-wise. Now, this is a fact. Finally, I convinced them that we needed to get water in. Well, anyway, when they went in to redesign the system, and I'm gonna find out about this, they made them take the sewage and dump it in the Feather River above the Tenth Street Bridge, that's that big bridge that goes across on Highway twenty, and then they pull it out down on Garden, you know, and the water there is beautiful as far as I'm concerned. Not quite the quality of PID water, but it's getting close on here. And they have, if you look off that bridge, they had a series of wetlands that this was strictly for wastewater effluent, which I've dealt with in the past on some things. Jim and I had opportunity to look at some of it. And then they dump it back in the river like Chico dumps seven million gallons a day in the Sacramento River, and they pull it out down below. And, you know, and I have no excuse for not getting that information. I used to know the people that were running both the waste plant and the water treatment plant, but they've all since retired, and of course, I moved on to other things. But anyway.
I'd like to make one comment, I think I may have went over... The wetlands I was talking to this engineer about have sides on them, two to three feet. They can also be used made out of dirt and constructed basically with a dozer and level. This is one way the costs go down. And not a fifteen-foot pit used to control water into a water treatment plant, they're actually wetlands that way. So, they talk about all the expense in them, they're... It would be cheaper to build than a settling pond. So I... My best guess is that you're looking at probably four million, five million dollars, without having an engineering firm look at it. And you're dropping the water back into the reservoir, you're not recycling it through a nine-million-dollar thing.
For clarification, again, did we not have the three engineering firms that, before we picked AECom, look at that as an alternative?
No. In all fairness to AECom, they did a life cycle analysis of a design that came up... That was developed by Brown and Caldwell for Lee and Rowe. They had... They were forced to change it, because what was provided did not meet the requirements of what the district was trying to accomplish. That's why it got moved to the other side. They did some... I'll let them answer this, but they certainly talked to their colleagues that are wetlands experts in their firm, and discussed it with them as far as ideas. But I just wanted to be clear, what they were asked to accomplish was a life cycle analysis of what the Lee and Rowe report presented.
Somewhere along the line, I had the impression that all three of the firms did not think that the aluminum product that we needed to get out was going to happen with anything other than like a tub basin-type setup, like we were basically giant bathtub, you know?
Well, I mean...
Sudden Mary... A sudden Terry Pond.
That was more to do with equalization storage and making sure that we could bring the water to the headworks, not maintaining an NPDES permit.
It's... George is right, it's completely different construction, the design didn't have any plants in it, so my definition or the definition I come up with hitting on these constructed wetlands talked about plants, it didn't... They don't talk about fifteen-foot things. This was designed to not renew the NPDES permit, to recycle water, just like the engineering study we have or think.
But Brown Caldwell's proposal did not have plants. It did not have anything but...
No, I talked to the engineer about that, and basically, he said, "Well, that's what they wanted, because you wanted to have water storage for headwater to recycle... To stay, keep the water within the system." And what I'm proposing is what a normal constructed wetland is not used, is that kind of a device, to hold water in a fifteen-foot pit and so forth. They're, like I said, they're two to three feet deep, and it depends on what kind of material you put underneath it, that's gonna be the engineering design, but they're... And they're large, because they have to... The smallest I saw on internet was five acres, or half an acre, and the largest is five hundred acres, six hundred acres, and that's all determined on the amount of flow. And the big ones were for diverting rivers to clean up problems, and then dropping the water into a normal water treatment plant.
Well, my comment about it is that we've studied this, as I recall, and as I recall, the very first engineering firm that we had would not make any commitment as to whether the process would clean up our water. He said, "What you're gonna have to do is build a small prototype, observe it for a year, and then we'll be in a better position to size it." Bill, you make comments like, according to your best guesstimate, but that's not what we do. We spent twenty-five thousand dollars in an engineering study to get experts' opinions on what it would take in sizing to produce the wetlands. And I... You know, the constructed wetlands, when you first came up with the definition, there was such a definition as constructed wetlands. I was trying to look it up on the internet here, but I couldn't find an exact concise definition for it, because the constructed wetlands are a little bit different for wastewater treatment, they're a little bit different for something they call non... I don't know what, NPS or non-point source pollution, whatever the heck that is. Anyhow, I can't understand it, and you kind of give us, you know, a hope that the cost would be less, but we've had an engineering firm tell us the cost will be actually more.
But that was for a...
A constructed wetland.
No, it wasn't truly a wetland. It wasn't used like a wetland.
No, but you keep going back to wanting a true wetland. This is a constructed wetland, which you said, that's an important definition. And I suggest, instead of you giving us your definition of it, we find a published constructed wetland definition, and it says what it says.
Did you read the email that I asked Georgia Anna to send to the directors?
I did not, because I just couldn't do it.
Okay, well, then it has the definition you're asking.
Then why didn't you bring it?
Because I had that email sent out, and I was hoping that you at least read it.
I think you should've brought it to share with the public. But nonetheless, I just wanted to say that I think that we've done our due diligence. At first, I was optimistic about a wetland or a constructed wetland, if it was not gonna be in the path of a future road that may be developed, if it wasn't going to get us in trouble as a district, if we created a wetland, and then somehow we needed to abandon it or go to something else in the future, and then what's our obligation going to be to the environmentalist in regard to a wetland that has now taken place in a particular area? I'm sure that we're gonna be held accountable and responsible for maintaining a wetland, even if it wouldn't do any service for cleaning our water. That was just a negative fear that I had, and it may not be relevant. But I think that we've done plenty of due diligence. We started on this, I think, back in September, or October of last year. Here we are knocking on the door of September this year. I believe that we should take a tried and true product that has been vetted, there are plenty of them in place. You say that, yeah, there's these wetlands and they're cleaning up these things, but I'm surprised if you have such powerful information that you didn't bring the name and address and phone number of that site. I still think that it's more of a hope that the wetlands might work out, and to say that it's going to be a low-cost alternative without having any fact behind that from acknowledged engineering firms, from experts, is perhaps too misleading for the public. At any rate, I'm kind of in, as you can tell, in favor of something that we aren't gonna bleed to death on, and then ultimately maybe have to abandon, like that current wastewater cleaning thing we have at our site. So, that's just kind of the way that...
Most articles that I've picked up on wetland, constructed wetlands in general, the first thing they talk about is the cost savings over mechanic, over and over again. It's not the thing that we had designed, and the thing I thought was a wetland, so I said I was ignorant as much as anybody else, that was designed by Lee and Rowe, and square or rectangle-shaped thing, as I learned in part from Jim bawling me out in the meeting, telling me this was old technology and didn't work and so forth, so I went home and thought, "Well, what's Jim talking about?" And looked it up, and, yeah, I agree with him. It's just what he said it was, it wasn't gonna work. And it was old technology, and it was fifteen feet deep. And then I started looking at the other wetlands that are working all around the nation, all around the world, Australia, New Zealand, just about any kind of a... And then they're being used in undeveloped countries for a primary water treatment source to treat water for potable use. The thing that came back, over and over again on these twenty-seven pages plus, when they gave a definition, was the reason people went to it wasn't because they're in love with wetlands, it was because it saved them a great deal of money, and it worked. It doesn't take much labor to maintain, and no highly-trained people to manage it. As far as aluminum, and remember, you've got the light-colored shirt on today, I forgot your name.
Tom.
Tom was talking to me after the last meeting, and says, "Well, how are you gonna control the aluminum?" And I said, "I don't know, I have no idea." So now I've looked into aluminum control, and basically, it's the settling ponds and then polishing by the wetlands afterwards. And the wetlands are full of live things, all the way from micrisms to frogs and what have you. And you select the plants that go in it to what the purpose of the wetland is. Some plants are better at pulling out materials, depending on what materials you're trying to take out, than others. So, it's not a simple thing, and so that's why I talk about having an engineering firm that has experience with it, has done many of these, and can do things over the phone, which I was amazed with. But this is, to me, is just an attempt to educate and dispel some of the... But this is, this is to me is just an attempt to educate and dispel some of the things that's been talked about. We own a lot of brown up there. It would take an engineering study to see if it was feasible or not, because you're talking about areas of flow coming out. That's the problem that I see with having a wetland up there now. But as far as taking the chemicals out and giving us high-quality water, no, that's not a problem. They'll do it. It's being done.
George?
I would, I understand why Director Kellogg sees a lot of cost savings comments when he looks on the internet. And I'd agree, if we were in the valley, we'd probably think in a constructed wetland, we'd come out cheaper. But when we live in the hills, we live in the mountains that we do, it's one of the biggest problems we're faced with is our topography. And to create a wetland on a hillside is difficult at best. The idea of putting it up at the park side where there's a nice flat spot up there had some potential. I thought it would actually work. And Brown Caldwell looked at that and they came up with a very high-cost alternative. So I, I don't dispel that they work. They work, they can work. I don't think that it comes without risk of what the next constituent is. But I think the biggest issue we're dealing with in Paradise is we're up there on steep hillsides with limited space to work. And that's why we're not seeing the cost-saving benefits that other agencies are seeing.
How much land do we have up there? We don't have five acres, do we?
Twenty-two.
You mean usable?
Yeah, usable.
Where?
We're, we're the part, the one that we gave to the rec district.
Twenty-one or two?
Oh, there, there's probably ten acres of relatively flat land up there.
But how much is ours now since we leased it?
Oh, well, I, I talked to them. They were more than happy to work with us on a wetland option and incorporate it into a park-like setting. They were actually very supportive of that. But we're pumping all the water significantly higher across the road, lots of pipelines. We could even go without EQ storage because we could return that water under a permit for a while and then if the constituents changed, we could put in EQ storage and, and bring it back to the plant. But I don't think it's going to pencil out as a cheaper alternative. And, and as a public agency, we're spending public dollars. We've got a process that I commend staff greatly for coming up with. It is actually tried and true, very straightforward. It'll fix our problems and it'll fix our problems for the foreseeable future. That's why staff continues to come back to this as the right way to go.
Right.
This is, this is the same process that's happened in other areas. In other words, the staff would have to be educated and have to do some studies into in land, I think, where the three ponds now exist. That part of that area could be used, yes, you'd have to move dirt, but until you have an engineering study using the volumes to tell, and this doesn't have to move any dirt. It's just to get the volumes connected and figure out the size, the wetlands. It may not be possible. That's the biggest downside of it, is what George just said, the topography. The idea of putting it in the area that I'm talking about reduces the amount of pipes, pumping and so forth. But I don't know if it's engineering feasible because of the volume of water we use. It could, which was confusing a little bit. I sent the engineer these volumes and he looked at it and he came up with ten acres, doing it over the phone and so forth. But we own well over a hundred acres up there in forest and so forth. So I, I don't think it's a impossible task. It may be too expensive, I don't know. But I would like to us to look into something that does not require, requires us to keep the NPDES permit and use as wetlands. I just think it would save the district a tremendous amount of capital costs.
Larry? How much land do we have where the ponds are?
I, I don't know. We, we own quite a bit of land as it goes up that stretch, but it's very steep.
Very steep, so it's not flat, right?
It's only flat, Larry, where the existing ponds are. That was made, made flat.
There's no way you could put a wetland where the ponds are, right?
Well, you have to start with the ponds. And the ponds, you know, you were talking about a four million dollar cost. I think reconstructing the ponds, which is a requirement, was four or five million dollars right off the top. I don't remember exactly what that component was.
Oh, okay.
It was pretty significant. And, and what, and those have to be lined, whether we keep the permit, whether we don't keep the permit. We know, these guys live up there, those ponds leak. So even if we kept the permit, we have to completely reconstruct those ponds to make sure they don't leak because they become a direct point source into the reservoir rather than going through the treatment process, even if you built a wetland.
If we still utilized them.
Yeah.
Unlike the mechanical solution that we're looking at.
Well, the other thing is you build new, you replace those ponds with settling basins, which was one of the original Lee and, the original Lee and Rowe proposal for around three million. And then it's, it's marked into this proposal now, which is, I don't know where it's going to be at.
That's three plus four that you anticipate the wetlands, so we're at seven.
I don't know what the wetlands will cost because it would take a firm that has experience with wetlands to come in and, and do it. But as far as running a pilot plant, I don't think it's necessary to do that. As far as running a year's trial, there's enough information out there. It's not necessary to do that. They have enough experience in the engineering industry with water treatment of all sorts with wetlands. And you need a firm that's had lots of experience to be able, this guy told me things in minutes that I didn't have anybody else tell me about.
I did, I did look at your proposal that you sent on the email and one of the first things that caught my eye was wetlands are more suited for a warmer climate than a cold climate. We tend to get very cold up in that area. A lot of the plants that you use for a wetlands don't look like they would be survivors. That's why you don't see them out in the habitat out there during the winter months when it's snowing or it's just eighteen degrees outside. Those are plants that don't survive because they looked like more like tropical plants. I'm not sure. That's the plants they would use.
Well, they have working wetlands in Canada, which has much more severe weather than we have here.
But I did some research on wetlands too, and I did see that almost everything out there is for biodegradables for sewage treatment. I didn't see anything that was for processed water recycling that wasn't, that was based in the mountains. It was all valley, very warm climate. There's nowhere that I saw anywhere that's comparable to us in there.
Well, they have it in Pennsylvania, large scales. They have a much severe climate we have here for winter time. And they have hills. We, they call them mountains, but we think of them as hills.
You know, as I stated before, I've done a lot of looking at wetlands, always from the standpoint of coming out of a wastewater class sewer, and using the effluent and had a lot of fun to helping design and build. And what we would have to do up there is terrace, you know, because you've got to have the right slope and, and the width and all of that. And which would be kind of really tearing the whole hillside up, but we'd have to, wherever we put it, we'd have to put it on terrace. And the environmentalists would love it because they'd love those type of activities. So that would be one thing that we, they, they do, they like that. And you can understand why if you see something working. And, but one of the bad things, and I think we're still on that, we would have to prove to the state and Lee and Rowe and AE Com said that we would have to prove that it's doing the job.
Because there's no-
Which means we would have the seven figures in the thing and we would be proving it, you know, and maybe it would work for the, and the world all of a sudden would have a cheaper way of doing it. But anyway, so.
We would be the guinea pig. There is no-
We would be a guinea pig on this.
Okay, here's a, here's an answer. I'll read it. This is from the Eastern Mummisible Water District. As a result of recent investigations by the State of California Water Quality Control Board, there is an indication that the basin plan objectives within the San Jacinto Valley Regional Water Reclamation Facility service areas will become more stringent. It is anticipated the regional water quality board will apply a nitrogen standard to recharge water such as the district currently percolates into the Hemet and San Jacinto upper pressured subbasins, thereby making it easier for the district to comply with the new proposed basin objectives. Wetlands may augment removal capabilities without necessitating the expenditure of funds on biological nutrient removal at the Hemet-San Jacinto Regional Water Reclamation Facility.
So once again, a wastewater, a wastewater facility.
This is in California? No, actually they're recharging.
But they're talking biological-
Yeah, it's-
You're talking about nutrients, nitrogen.
Right, and there, and there's-
Biological process as opposed to the chemicals we're talking about.
Right, the wetlands, many of the references to them was taking nitrogen and phosphorus out of the water. And so the wetland we would look at wouldn't have the problem, as far as I know, with nitrogen or phosphorus.
But we have, we have a aluminum plant.
That's easier.
Yeah.
No, I, I don't think-
Nitrogen and phosphorus are two different chemicals.
It's not relevant to this problem. So it makes it particularly difficult. And we're back to the, the issue that all three of the firms that sat in here some time ago and were queried about whether or not this would have to be vetted and proven to the various resource agencies that have governance. And everyone agreed that that would have to be done. So it's not just being stubborn and, and resistant to the idea of a wetland being a viable process. I think George's comment regarding the footprint and the availability of space really plays into it and the verticality of your site makes a difference in terms of how much water you've got to move up and down.
That's, that's the problem where you have to have somebody look at it as an engineer and say yes, no, or, you know, on it.
Well, I think, I think we had three, three firms. Three firms nodded, not a great suggestion that, due to our topography. I think they were all looking at Paradise. I don't think they were looking at Stockton when they, when we asked them to come to our PID meeting. They were looking at Paradise and when I asked the question, I didn't expect to get an answer, but I asked if any one of the three firms thought this was going to work and everybody kind of stared at the ceiling and didn't want to, you know, really give any kind of an answer. I wouldn't have either. But there was nobody that stepped up and said, I think we can make this work. They said with enough money, we could maybe make it work with the right trial and maybe the state would sign off on it. But all three of them said there's no guarantees that whatever we do in a wetland situation will even fly, number one. So it could be just wasted money. And number two, whether or not it was going to be economically feasible or less expensive than the mechanical process of dewatering.
What, what they were looking at was that, that rectangle that was fifteen feet deep, all three, all the firms.
Well, that's what they came up with, but I'm sure they looked at something else before.
No.
Relative to our problem.
They talked about other things, but they didn't look at them. Because the way the plant wants to be configured by our men is to have, they wanted to use it as a surge tank to hold a lot of water to, to feed into the head. The thing I'm talking about says, we forget about that and we just put in the settling ponds and a wetland and drop the water back into the Megalya reservoir and live with the NPDES permit.
Okay.
That's it.
Okay, thank you. Any, anybody else wish to make any comments? Please.
Lauren Harvey again. Should have took my hat off last time, I apologize. As a point of clarification, a couple of things I'd like to say here. First is where is this stuff going now? It's my understanding it's going in Megalya reservoir. So why isn't hazmat out there condemning it now if that's not working? Why, why, why isn't that not killing fish? That's, that's the question. And the other question that I've been asking since this thing did start in last September is I, I, I as a public member and I feel that you guys as a board should, should know what the physical volume of these chemicals are that we're dealing with. What is this? Is this a dump truck a year? Is this a freight train a year? Is this a shoebox a year? How much physical chemicals are we talking about taking out of this water? Because that would make a difference too. You see, if it was a shoebox full and it settled into a pond in the bottom of a pond, we wouldn't have to clean this thing for a hundred years. But if it's a freight train full, of course, we'd have to clean it every month. So we should know that. We should know how much the volume, physical volume of the, of the material that you want to take out is. The other thing is, is the railroad goes, the old railroad tracks go right up past the plant up there. Most of the railroad tracks from Chico up is at a two percent grade. I'm not sure what that is up there, but, but there's a natural ravine where the railroad tracks went and they abandoned that. That's a, a thought to think about for pipes and such, or no matter which way you go. And the other thing is that I thought of while I was, while I was sitting there listening to this, it'd be much easier, much easier on the ratepayers if, if we, if a wetlands would, would attract attention from the earth people and, and we'd get grants because we're doing something eco-friendly instead of a mechanical machine. That would relieve the public from part of the debt of putting this thing in. And I think, I feel that it'd be much easier to get a grant of some kind from some sort of a an outfit that was interested in the environment more than, than chemicals. Such is the same as bicycle paths are going in downtown now. And why is that? Because it's, it's eco-friendly, even though we know nobody's going to use them. But they got a grant for it. But the other thing is, is all this is mute, all this is mute if the public does not vote in this money to do this with. So we've spent a lot, we've spent almost a year now in discussions of this thing. We're up to around ten million dollars at my last count and we don't even know if the public's going to vote this in. We haven't took a poll of the public, which I feel would be the responsible thing to do, to find out if they'll even pay for this. Because if they don't, if the public, if the residents of Paradise vote this down, then we have an entirely different problem going there. Even wetlands, mechanical, whatever it is, if this thing turns out to be ten, twelve million dollars and the public says, uh-uh, we, we don't want to do this, now we've got a completely different problem that we haven't even explored. And we've spent all this time on, on, on deciding which project is the best, which I don't know and I don't, I don't have a dog in that race particularly. But I'm just saying, other than a ratepayer. But, but I'm just saying, we don't even know that the public's willing to spend five million dollars on a plant. And if they reject this, gentlemen, then we have a totally different problem going. So I feel that maybe we should, we should have our public relations people put a flyer out and, and take a poll of the public and say, we, we have to do this. We have to do some sort of a thing to, to rectify the problem of this chemical. What, what would be your, what would be your thought in, in paying for this or, or something? You see, because we're asking them to pay for it. And so if they're not willing to pay for it, this dog's dead. Thank you.
Can I clarify a little bit?
Sure.
Any additional revenue that we're going to have to get to be able to borrow the money to build this? Will go through the Prop 218 process. So it doesn't go to a vote of the people, it goes to a vote, a potential majority protest. We don't need a, just to clarify so the board and the public understands, it's not a vote for it. There would have to be a majority of customers that cast a vote against it, just to be clear.
Right.
Secondly, and our attorney's not here, the question for him, but there's also some case law relative to whether you can institute a rate increase for something that you feel is necessary to keep the district from falling apart. And thumbing the nose at the state agency and multiple violations, tens of thousands of dollars on a daily basis would bankrupt the district. So it's not even clear whether, if they did reject it, whether you couldn't institute it anyhow. And that's something that legal would have to advise you on.
Right.
Could I just, just, I know I've already sit down, I'm sorry. Could I just say one thing please?
Yeah, go ahead and say it from there.
I just, I just want to say that regardless either way, from what I'm hearing is, is if we can, if we, if we send out a car and every plant doesn't realize it's it and they don't vote for it- send out a card and everybody doesn't realize it's it, and they don't vote for it, and we stop it by, I don't think that that's moral. I think you should advise the public that we're going into debt and find out what they think. I'm sorry if I shook it up.
Okay. Now, we will go on to design agreement to process water recycling project. Manager Barber?
Yes, you have my memo from previously, and mostly I was just reminding the board that time is money and you need to make some decisions and keep moving forward in this process, or it could ultimately cost us more down the road in addition to what we're going to have to spend. Staff met with AECOM, we went over their proposal, we discussed it with them, made sure we were on the same page and understood what our expectations of them were and what their, and that they understood what our expectations were. So, we're pretty comfortable with where this discussion has landed, and with that, I'll turn it over to you to...
The discussion period will be later.
No, it isn't discussion, it's a question, and I think it's appropriate to ask it right now.
Before information?
Before it starts.
Okay.
You've got copies of this on procurement policies, page 1211, the question I want to ask. It's the 12.4.7, and it's A. And the question is, "The selection committee shall select and rank at least three firms. Requests and proposals shall be sent to selected firms. Why aren't we doing that with this particular proposal? It's up to $900, almost a million dollars, and it's the most expensive engineering thing I've had since I've been on the board. And I'm sure there's probably an easy answer to it, but why isn't there two other engineering firms here to put their proposals?"
I can answer that. Because we voted not to.
Yeah, we already did that.
First of all, if you go to policy 2.2.7 on 12-5, there is some precedent for the continuation of previous work, but more importantly, policies are guidelines established by the board, and the action that was taken at the last meeting was to direct staff to negotiate a proposal with AECOM and present it back to the board. So, that's what we're doing, as the board directed us to do.
Okay, well, my comment is simply, with amount of money on the board for this kind of thing, there should be three bids, and it would be a fair assessment for the district. And I'm sure that you had three engineering firms review this, they would all have different costs.
Okay.
And our board's primary responsibility is the financial health of the district.
Just for public clarification, did we not do that two months ago?
We did it. We did it two months ago. We also did it way at the beginning of this process, and we ended up with a firm that probably, they wouldn't like me to say this, but it's probably a bigger bite than they probably should have chewed on, is it further developed. So, yes, we did it originally, and then we did it again a few months ago for the study.
So, that was when we picked...
That wasn't for construction, not for this kind of work.
Well, we're still not picking a firm for construction at this point.
Wait, well, I'll take it. The last time we met, there were three of them here, three firms. And one of them, we've already paid $230,000, whatever it is, and I'll make these comments a little later. Also, I personally didn't care for their work, to be honest with you. They know that, because I told them that right here at the board. But we selected what we thought out of those three were the best to bring this proposal to the end of the AECOM.
Okay.
But, Will, we actually have looked at three groups for engineering studies.
Right.
So, we selected because of AECOM to present that.
Right.
Okay.
So, we actually have looked at three.
Okay.
One sec before that. The other thing, too, is we go out for professional services, remember that we go out for a process for qualified candidates, meaning that we're looking at the qualifications of each one of the candidates in professional services, not just the cost associated with those services. And so, last time when we went out for the initial design or proposal for that process versus wetlands, that's exactly what we did, is we went out for a qualified candidate. You guys selected the qualified candidate of AECOM, therefore, that's why we feel it's not in violation of the policy.
Okay.
Select AECOM for this because we've already went through the process to make sure that they're qualified for this process.
Well, I would ask that you refer to the attorney, since I cannot refer to the attorney a question like this. That would have probably kept it maybe from coming here, even. So, I would like you to ask Dustin about that, the policy on this, and just what you stated.
We've talked to Dustin about professional engineering firms exactly, because it's kind of came up before.
No, there isn't, they're a good firm. I have no complaint about AECOM's ability or skills or anything else. The idea is very simple. The last time we voted on three firms, it was for the projects that we've been produced. AECOM got the bid in part because they were the lowest. We've gotten the report from them on that. We didn't put up this work, the three bids, the actual deal on the plants themselves and so forth. We put it up to one firm. And that's my question, and that's what I'd like to find out from Dustin. Is that all right?
Dustin was at the meeting when we voted to do this.
Yes, he was.
So, he was here, so...
And I believe it was directly related to the process water recycling project.
Wait, yes. I clarified this with Dustin before I put that option for the board in here. They, you had two options as a board. Negotiate a contract with AECOM and bring it back to you for consideration, or request for proposals to multiple firms. That was option two. The board selected one, negotiating with AECOM. I verified with Dustin prior to even giving you that option that that was appropriate. He said yes, he was in the meeting where you actually took that action. He would have corrected that as an option had it been a problem legally.
Okay, thank you.
Well, George, you mentioned, and I tried to find it here a little earlier, exactly what you were saying with AECOM. But even if we approve, we don't have to go along with it. We can still, someplace in here you've written, and I couldn't find it here, but I read it, where it's still out that we do not have to do it. In other words, will they do this study?
This is not a study.
This is the scope of services.
This scope of services.
Yes, which is, to me, they're studying a whole bunch of stuff.
Yeah.
Or looking at it, you know? We apparently don't have to approve that. They're finished product. Now, I would think that we would be very foolish, and I'll make some other comments on it, you know, because we're going to be using our capacity fees and all that kind of stuff, that we wouldn't do it with some modification after we look at it, primarily the staff and you. Anyway, so it's really, it's really all right.
Let me give you my clear understanding, and these guys can correct it if they don't understand it the same way. In this proposal, if you were to accept this proposal, you will, you are accepting a contract with them, subject to legal counsel's review, to design alternative three, also study some of those additional components or further vetting, and those additional components would have to come back to you for full design.
That's...
But the basic project, you are approving them to design to a point that we can go out to bid.
That's exactly what I was trying to say. You've written it that way, and it's really good.
It's right here.
And then, when it goes out to bid, that will be for construction, at which point we will have a chance as a board to pick the constructing firm that comes in with the best price.
Well, even before we go out to bid, Seth, you're going to bring back your finished report on this scope of services for us to preview and look at.
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
Providing we approve it.
We accept it.
Providing we approve it.
You worded that quite well, I had it here, but I can't. You just stated it, George.
It's in the scope, yeah.
Yeah, see, so, yeah, good.
Okay.
So, I'm not going to, who is AECOM? I'm not going to belabor that. We went through this before. We are a large firm, we're getting bigger all the time, and we are very capable and competent. We certainly appreciate the opportunity to provide these services to PID. We are global, but we are very local, and we like the idea of being able to work here. We really appreciate the opportunity. We have experience in this area. We have reached out to our technical cohort within the company, and we have gone through this process of looking at wetlands versus filters versus mechanical processes, and we came to the conclusion that, for the district's purposes, this alternative three was the process that should be pushed forward, which is what we presented in our analysis previously. We've worked with the district, we want to continue to work with the district to your ends. To that end, we've worked diligently with your management, district management and staff to clarify the scope so that we understand what it is that is to be taken forward and studied, and then the PSNE or plan specs and estimates for construction documents be produced so that you can get to bid for the construction of this facility in a relatively short period of time. We take great care in producing our work. It's not only to manage our risk, but to manage the quality of the product that you receive. And to that end, we are ISO certified. We have, we go to a lot of trouble in terms of our own systems to ensure that our folks keep track of what we're doing, make sure that the quality of the work is the highest possible, and that we check it before it goes anywhere. It somewhat delayed our process of getting you a proposal because we had to go through the process of vetting it with an independent group to make sure that what we were proposing didn't encumber us, but also covered what it was that you were looking for. So, I just wanted to point that out because I feel that that is a very significant component of our quality management system. Some people talk about it, we actually practice it. So, with that, I'm going to let Joe talk about who we're going to have on the job and how we're going to execute it, and then we can respond to any questions that you might have.
Sure. And just to reference a slide real quickly, you can kind of see some of the steps that we have to go through. This is all tracked internally via our interweb. You see that, you know, even when we set up the project and we plan it, it's all has very...
Can we get the lights dimmed before we can read what he's got?
I think it's...
Can you see it on my screen? I can't see it on the screen on this.
I can't see it up there.
We've got a connection issue with that we need to address, but your screens are coming up.
I can't read it.
You can't read it.
Yeah, it's a little fuzzy.
It's faded, too.
Sorry.
It's the background.
We can't read what you're saying.
That's all, that's all right.
That's okay. But anyways, so, you know, throughout the life of your project, there are very regimented steps that we have to take to meet our own quality processes. So, no matter how big, how small the project, $25,000 study that we performed for you already already went through an internal vetting before we turned it over to you. And then, the million dollars that we have in this design project will go through, and you will see the various experts who will look at this project before we give you a deliverable product. So, the project team that we have, you know Tom already, he was the project manager for the Megalya bypass pipeline that was done up here a few years ago. I'm the project manager, I've got 20 years of water treatment plant experience, processes from the front of the plant all the way to the back of the plant, especially with separation processes that we're looking at here, flocculation, segmentation and filtration. And I've managed, currently managing a lot of this team in a couple of other projects, and I'll go over that in a little bit. So, I have, again, you know, many, many years of experience managing this level of project. Our design manager will be Simon Hernandez, see him in this box here. He will do a peer review of the civil and mechanical portions of Leon Rose's report. The first item that we're going to do is a peer review of alternate three, just to go back one more time, see how best we can optimize it and how best we can fit it onto the site that we have available. So, any savings, any optimizations that we find, we'll report back to you guys, and hopefully that will translate into capital cost. So, Simon will be performing that, the review from a civil and mechanical standpoint. From a process standpoint, we will have Bill Clooney performing that duty. Bill is one of AECOM's technical leaders in water treatment. He is also one of the committee members on the residuals management committee for American Water Works Association. So, he's a nationally recognized expert on residuals management for water treatment processes, so he is well aware of the latest technologies and trends, so he will bring that knowledge to that peer review. And to QAQC that process and the preliminary design report that we're going to produce, we have Greg Bradshaw, who's located in our San Diego office. He is our West Coast Regional Water Treatment Lead. So, he, again, we're bringing some heavy horsepower just to look at your, just to look at this project from a detailed standpoint. When we get into design, again, Simon will be serving as the design manager, and all the other processes, I'm working with Dave Scherchel, who is our structural engineer, and Richard Schlutz, who is our architect on our SAC regional project down for the SAC regional water treatment plant. That's a $1 billion improvement that we have a $35 million contract for to design a nitrifying side stream process. So, those guys are on my team there, so I'm working with them currently and bringing them onboard here. Dave has about 40 years of experience in design of water bearing structures for water treatment plants, and Richard has a lot of industrial design architectural experience, so they know these types of buildings and structures. Getting back to Simon, he's got 40 years of experience of designing water treatment plants. He actually did the design of the current plant that you have when he was at Brown and Caldwell. On the electrical side, one of the questions is, we're introducing a lot of load to your treatment plant, so we're going to be looking at the electrical infrastructure that you guys have out there. Person that we've tapped to lead that effort is Alan Randall. He has 40 years of experience of electrical design for treatment plants, and he's currently working with me on a wastewater treatment plant project in Oxnard. So, as you can see, we're bringing a lot of qualified staff onboard. We're excited to get started and hope that we will bring a successful conclusion to your project.
And though I'm not listed as one of the technical gurus on the project, my function is going to be your connection to AECOM management. If there's ever any issues associated with our performance, I'm the one that will make good of it. I will make sure that this happens, and I've done this in the past with the raw water bypass pipeline. Any hiccups, you guys don't hesitate to let us know because that's critical to us. We lose a client, the likelihood that we'll get that client back in 10, 20 years is pretty remote. So, it's paramount to us to maintain the relationship and make sure that we provide the service and the satisfaction that you're looking for. Just thought I'd throw that out there. Just thought I'd throw that out there.
Any, any questions?
Yes.
One from, oh, Bill?
It says a total here for 961,000, but does that include page four, 76,000?
No, that, that's not inclusive of that.
That's not included. So if we wanted the, those parts of it, we'd actually add 76,000 to 961?
Yes.
So the cost could be well over a million dollars then?
Yeah, yes.
Any questions from directors?
Yeah, I haven't.
Oh, go ahead, Bill.
Okay.
Just move this way.
Okay. Two, two things, of course, because of what I talked about in the wetlands. DCBM and aluminum, how you're removing those to be, since we're going to make it a closed system that uses California or Health Department regulations and the NPDES permit goes away. How are we going to test and regulate those two products that the NPDES permit talks about, but California doesn't? And those are concerns to me for the people in our community.
Sure.
On water quality.
Yeah. The, the way that that's regulated is that the, the water recycled back to the head of the plant is controlled to less than 10% of the overall flow through the plant at that time. So if you're treating 8 million gallons per day at that point, you cannot bring back more than 800,000 gallons per day to the process. So, so you're reintroducing less of it. A lot of it, a lot of the aluminum is going to get settled out in this side stream process and get landfilled. The DCBM is, this, this water is not chlorinated, so it will, or it's chlorinated to, to a point, but, but that is not regulated on the return and, and the 10% rule will help control that.
Yeah, but is there any testing for the quantities of these like there's required under the NPDES permit?
In your finished water, there is, yes.
So would these would be tested and kept within the standards?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, we're not testing the process water that we're bringing back in, we're testing the final water after it goes through the treatment plant, which is the same testing we do right now.
We do, we do it our way.
Yeah, but there's no, there's no difference in the testing we're doing.
Yeah, the, the water coming back to the plant has to meet a turbidity requirement, has to be clear enough to get reintroduced back to the plant. And that's part of the reason why this is a proven technology we know we can get, we can meet that standard with this process.
Okay, right now, it's tested at the ponds. Now, so you're going to say that in this new plant, it will be tested internally somewhere?
Yes. Yeah, we have, there, there's an online turbidity meter measuring the product water before it is introduced back.
Yeah, but turbidity is different than the DCBM and aluminum. Aluminum's probably part of the turbidity, I noticed that. But the DCBM, we're going to monitor that to make sure it meets requirements?
It'll, that'll be monitored on the, on, on the finished product and, and also out in-
Water goes to town, but leaves the plant. We have testing requirements that cover DCBM and aluminum.
Through the Department of Health?
Yes.
Okay.
No different than we already are.
Correct.
We're just not releasing the water into Magalia Reservoir, we are bringing it back into the plant where we can then reutilize it as drinkable water.
Yes.
All the same safeguards for the public health will be in place. We're not changing that to any degree. The primary difference is that you're eliminating the NPDES.
The permit, yeah.
Yes. The product water, the product water from the side stream process is going to get reintroduced at the head of the plant. So it still goes through settling, it still goes through filtration before it-
Okay, well, one of the reasons this question's asked is, a reporter is taking down notes and I don't want, the first thing, what I talked about, the dangers of these chemicals to the human health, and make sure that it's said publicly that the new plant will not have any problems with those. We'll make sure that is protected.
Yeah, there's no change.
The product from this will still meet the same rigorous quality standard that the PID has maintained over its lifetime.
Okay.
Okay. You have any questions?
Yeah, I'd like to make a couple of comments, I'll try to keep them brief, that's pretty difficult for me. I first started becoming involved with this in September of 2012, and I was a member of the public at that time. At the first Lee and Row report by Roger, and then after I was elected and sat on the board, the next time he came back, he went from 2.5 mil to 7 mil plus, and I predicted we were looking at 10 and Jim's eyeball to be on this type of a thing. And that's when all of a sudden I started scratching my head and I told Roger that right here from, or chair for different anyway, I'd been embarrassed to come back and make a presentation to the board. And so I boiled into it, but then when you gave your presentation, remember, I looked at you like I'm doing now and told you that if you weren't doing it, and I paid it to Foyger too, if you were not professional and, you know, had your act together, I'd be telling you that, just as one elected director from the good old Paradise Irrigation District. And I'm very happy to point my finger at you and say, I'm very impressed with your organization. Really impressed with it. And I've done a lot of research on this, just so I was knowledgeable to make a vote for this $10 million that we're going to be spending out here. And I'm really impressed with your organization and the staff at the water treatment plant. George has really been making a point of answering my questions and giving me an opportunity. And Jim and I went to two treatment plants in the Rose, Roseville Sacramento area, and Joe went with us one morning, spent the morning with us at the Roseville plant, and I really confirmed a lot of stuff that I was wondering about. So it was a wonderful trip for me, the dialoguing with Jim on the trip, and we've already talked to Bill and Niels and out here, so I'm really impressed. So this scope of services, I'd like to ask a few questions on it.
Yes.
I've looked at it, okay. And some that I had even before we got onto here. I'll just do page by page on this thing. And it's a flunk leach and, you're talking about two basins. Now those are, they'll be on the website, yeah. Now I'll, I'll tell you the page out here if you want to do that, yeah. It's on up, George, or whoever's doing it. I, I think they're a good question to answer, at least in my mind.
What page?
It's the first page. That, and it, well, it would be the zero page.
Okay.
It's open pages, okay. And it goes down here, you're talking about two basins. That is just basically is the tanks that we looked at all last, Joe, that we looked at there at Roseville. Joe and Jim and I spent the whole morning at the Roseville plant, and it was really an eye opener for me, and confirming some stuff that I knew for past and out here. And then determined that we went on this casted place concrete structure, metal roof over the basins. Is that going to be a building or it's just, see, here's this old farmer, ag engineer, and a metal roof over it is just four posts and a roof? Or is this going to be a structure?
No, it's, it's just going to be a, probably just a roof.
Just a roof?
Yeah.
Okay, good. And underneath that would be the concrete and all of that.
Yeah, yeah, just be, yeah.
Okay, now I'd like to buzz on through here, and I wasn't going to make a comment when we tuck off down to that, whether it was between the belt press and the centrifuge, but I think by the time I finish. And on page one, George, now, we, over here, you go down centrifuge, de-watering system. I finally on that trip figured out what a de-watering system was, that was because of Joe and Jim talking to me. The centrifuge we looked at there, and of course they put out four times the water than we do, just because of the population, with 60 horsepower. Now you've got here a centrifuge of 10 to 30 horsepower. So we're going to have a smaller centrifuge than we looked at there.
Yeah.
Yeah, because remember that was a 60 horsepower.
Yes, yes, yeah.
And I'm going to find out, the 45-year-old, what it, what horsepower it is, because I'll bet you it's going to be about the same size as ours. And then the plate settler is number six, down there where it says plate settler. I got this all highlighted, where's, where's the plate settler? Is there some of that?
That's-
No, this is year one.
That's on the previous page, I believe.
Okay, this must be a new one. I finally figured out, thanks to you and Jim, what plate settlers are, and both of the plants we looked at didn't have that, you know, but we're going to have it. And basically what it is, it just stops the flow of water, so the turbidity in it will settle out, and you've got the pumps in here to take it out. I think that's really good. I've had the good fortune of building some of those for erosion control, and any time you sew the water down, it'll settle out. And so I just call those baffles. And the getting over here, the ditty gritty of it, we'll go over to page, now we're on page one, George. Oh, no, we just finished page one. And then over here, plans and specifications, this is on page two. And I think this is a good question because item number six, plans and specifications will not be submitted to the county for review of building permits. We don't need those, right?
Correct.
Okay. Now let's go to page 14. Wherever that's at back here, and it's under the scope of additional services. Number four, materials testing and special inspections to meet local building codes and requirements. If we don't have to get a permit, why do we have to worry about that?
For independent-
Huh?
We need to independently verify it.
Right, okay, good. That's what I was thinking.
It's essentially quality control of the-
Quality control. And there will be someone on site, not one of you engineers, but a person that will actually monitor so that it's going to code and all that stuff.
Yes, an additional, once we know what the design is going to be, we will seek the help of, for construction assistance will, will mean a project manager and whatever inspectors we need to make sure it's-
With that inspector will be on site?
Yes.
Yeah. Like I worked in roofing, and we did a building, a big school, and it was thick butt composition shingles, and we actually had to have three tabs of through the nail, this was before the days of guns, you know, with metal. And that guy stood there, there was four or five of us, watching us all day, and if you missed one, you know, you had to tear it off and put one in there. Well, anyway, I'll just, I'm not going to rattle on here too long, but there's something. One of the things that I have a real fear on that piece of property up there, having an idea a little bit, I've done a lot of site development and dirt moving and stuff. When I went for a tour when I first threw my hat in the rain, and got up there and I was looking, and then Bill and I have been up there, I've been up by myself. To me, it looks like a bunch of that mountain is moving, you know, because when you have a paved or a concrete and it separates two, three, one inches up and down on this, something's happening. So you, you're going to have this tabber group.
Yes.
I'm sure they're great consultants, or you wouldn't have them with yours. So it's going to be interesting to see what you find, because someplace-
It will be critical to understand what is going on out there, and that was, you know, and, you know, frankly, people have postulated a variety of different things. We need to determine the basis of those movements so that we can incorporate any of the influence that it might have, whatever it is, in the design.
You see, the only thing that I had to do with it in my career was we'd have an engineer like you that would be telling us and then we would go back and, like these, there's two or three ponds in here that the staff has talked about, that they just dump dirt in, you know, instead of putting rock and building it up. So when you get to those, we may have to take all that material out and do something with it like they've been doing up here for these new buildings they're building and hauling dumping it off, because you're not going to get compassion on it.
And there's some things you can do to modify it in situ, in place, and there's, you know, it really depends on what, what paper finds in their investigation, and once we have a handle on that, obviously we'll share that, because that will, that will dictate how we move forward.
Then back on page one, demolition of abandoned circular treatment structure piping system and equipment. I would imagine you'll just get a scrap dealer to come in, give a bid and scrap it out of there, right? With the demolition?
Oh, item 10?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we should actually make a little bucks on that, because I got a little scrapped out at home, I'm going to raid the hall. Probably scraps about to help, but anyway, you see what I'm trying to be facetious, and I'll continue on here real quick. So I was having, thinking on the thing here, now, one of the things that I noticed, and even though I could talk about this all day, because I'm really impressed with this and your company, Tom and Joe, both of those places, Roseville, they had three working lagoons. And a lagoon is just a place where you put water, you know, on a farm we put, you know, waste from the livestock. They'd had four, but then they covered part of it up with this upgrades, but they were still using three lagoons, and they were big, you know, because they got lots of water. They were big. And one of them, if you remember Joe and Jim, was up the Fupper Inn, and we looked at it from a distance, and it was partly, it was full. And then the middle pond, lagoon, they kept, I call them ponds, but they call them lagoons, was in the drying up stage, and the third lagoon was dry, and he said they'd be getting in there digging out, kind of like we do out here. And I asked, well, how often do you put water in those lagoons? And he said occasionally, okay. So they used those for that. Then we go over to sad one, and we looked at the belt press there. And I don't want anything to do with myself, belt presses, because I worked commodities and ground and stuff on belt. And the process of looking, he mentioned, and he pointed, you know, just like they went up at the treatment plant, they have a couple of holes dug in the ground, this is exactly what he said, remember Tim? They have a couple of holes dug in the ground and occasionally they have to pump water over there to them. And he didn't know it, but we had been around. Out of those ponds, they're just up on the side of the hill, goes nowhere, they have a wetland. To him, it was just a place where weeds were growing and frogs and snakes on here. And I asked him, I said, how often do you have to pump over to those ponds? And they're just holes dug in the ground. He said occasionally, and I said, how often's occasionally? Well, you looked at his records, you know, he said every once in a while, and that was the answer both those guys gave, you know?
He got more-
So my bottom line is, then I, then I will be quiet. Are we going to have to worry about doing that same thing?
That's one of the things we're going to look at in, in the preliminary design, and yeah, that's one of the things that's kind of been nagging me about it is-
Okay, good, see?
Is sort of the, the flexibility and the redundancy. So we're going to look at the capacity of those basins that, that Lee and Row posed. We're going to look at the flexibility of the operation and see what-
Two more quick points. You know, I had the opportunity to spend the morning with Jim and Joe, and the dialoguing that they were doing back and forth, and I'm just the way person, what a little bit I know about this, I learned from our staff. I was repressed with the way you guys were talking and solving problems and looking at problems, and that's impressive, because I worked in a situation where that wasn't always the case. So instead of pointing my finger and saying, why don't you get on the ball, I think you organized on the ball, and I appreciate it. President.
Okay. Ken?
I, I just have kind of a, maybe a dumbbell question. I, I thought Doug was going to bring it up. On page one, the item number, de-watering building and system item number 10, you've got demolition of the abandoned circular treatment structure. On page number two, under sodium hypochlorite chemical feed system, you've got demolish and remove the chlorine grass scrubber. And back here, there's another demolition type thing. Page six, or page six, component eight, item number seven, determine demolition requirements. I don't know, I, I didn't think we'd need to really engineer a demolition study, wouldn't we just bring in some contractors and bid out those things? And they would give us their story or engineering or proposal on how they're going to decommission and demolish them and-
There's a different answer for-
Each one of those guys?
You're talking about the old treatment plant?
Yeah.
You want to be very specific, if you're going to build something over the top of it, how it's going to be removed. So if we're building another building there, you have to be specific, and that's what they're going to be. You get to the chlorine building, you have legal requirements and codes and specifications on how those things get not only demolished or, but disposed of, and so you need that to be correctly told to the contractor.
Surprisingly, you guys, you guys have already thought of all this?
And also, also it's not how you demolish it, it's when you demolish it is important. Because that chlorine facility needs to stay in service until the new hyposystem comes online.
You can't shut it down.
No water for a week.
We can that, that old water treatment thing.
It's really important to tell the contractor to, to inform the contractor of all these parameters, because it will influence how they bid it, especially if, if we're going to try and maintain service during the process. They can't be doing one thing before the other, so if you, if you change that up on them after the fact, they'll claim it. You don't need claims, right?
Yeah. Thank you, that was my only question.
You know, Seth?
No, you've done yours.
I just wanted to thank Tom and Joe for their presentation, and it looks to me like you guys have covered all the bases. I wanted to correct something Director Flesher said earlier where he said, we're going to be voting on a $10 million project, we are not going to be voting on a $10 million project, we're going to be voting on a- We are not going to be voting on a $10 million project, we're going to be voting on a, close to a $1 million project today. So just wanted to make sure that that was clarified.
Ten isn't sure. I don't think we even should talk about what it's going to cost, because that's how the guy got in trouble in the beginning. Well, don't know.
Yeah, wait, yes.
That's what we're trying to find out.
So we're, but we're not voting for a $10 million project, that's at least to be said today.
Right.
So I just wanted to thank you guys for sitting with us, explaining everything. Been very comprehensive and taking Director Flesher so that he could take a look at those facilities. That was great, so that we can get an understanding of how those things work. So I'd like to thank you.
Glad to do it. My question is, the, the staff has reviewed this, right? And they're all, they're all, they're all in favor of it, right?
Yes.
Okay, I just want that, to me, that's the important thing. Okay, what is yours quickly? Did you want to say something more?
I realize that we're not voting on 8.8 mil or whatever it happens to be, that'll be not too far down the road. How long will it take to complete this before we go to, before we get to back to approve it?
Um, we're anticipating bidding probably late summer next year.
Okay, a year, yeah.
Yeah, about a year.
About a year. Okay, so that would be the summer of fifteen. And I would think with the amount of money and time and energy that we've put in and they've put in, they've already told us they're going to renew our permit.
They have not, they have not told us they're going to renew our permit.
There'd be no reason for them not doing that. And then I know, and I was talking about over that pond and this pond, that we're going to keep that permit effective until we get all the wrinkles figured out. So we'll have that permit for.
That's our hope, we have no.
If they have not told us that.
We have no firm commitment.
They, these government places, don't, don't do anything in writing.
I've been a government employee since nineteen sixty, so I know quite well on that.
Right.
We've got a definite maybe on it, Doug.
Yeah, definite maybe, okay.
Public?
Could I just ask Joe one question?
Yes, sir.
I, I need your last name, but I don't know.
Paul, I'm sorry.
Do we, do, have you made verbal the amount of chemicals in volume that were intended to be cleaned out of this? You have an estimate on the minimum and the maximum amount of physical volume of, of chemicals that were taken out of this, such as aluminum and stuff?
Uh, yeah, we have an estimate of the amount of sludge that will be produced by, by the process. It's, it's in our report, and I, the number.
Just guess it.
Um, estimated.
Why don't we have, why don't, why don't we have, instead of that, instead of that Lauren, why don't we have Bill tell you how much sludge we take out of the ponds every year where the current.
We pull up and just come out of the year.
That's the mud though, not aluminum.
That's everything we pull up.
Yeah.
That's what we have to get rid of.
That's what, that's what we have to get rid of, so there's no, there's no separation of it.
We don't, we don't see how much is aluminum and how much is.
That's all the stuff that comes out of our water.
Okay, then I apologize, we're not, we're not talking about, we're not talking about the new equipment taking off the harmful chemicals. We're talking about taking out all the mud and everything too. And we're doing it all in one process, so basically, we'll, in the end, we'll know the percentage of what those are, but it's, it's going to be a massive volume because we're taking mud, obviously, mud is a big, big problem. You know? Okay, thank you for the.
I can ask Lauren, did I actually watch this? The, the way to go, and I think we're all agreeable on that, is the centrifuge. And we watched the centrifuge, it, we're at the Roseville plant. And this material plus the turbidity goes out and it winds up in a cart and goes to the landfill or wherever you take it. And so it's all of the aluminum, everything is out of it. And it goes through the centrifuge. And that centrifuge turns at about, and I just learned all this, at about 3,000 RPMs plus, but it has 3,000 Gs of force, you know, what a centrifuge does out here. So all that goes out, goes into a belt, and out. And we would run that centrifuge three days a week or something, that's what it would all be in there. Fortunately enough, at this point in time, and what research I've done, and I've got something here by a chemist that did it, the bill was relating to, it's not a hazardous material. If for some reason that they decided that was a hazardous material, and this explains it pretty well, why it's not a hazardous material, although it is carcinogenic, not the aluminum, but the other, then we'd be in big trouble. And all the rest of the plants would be. Because all of a sudden, we'd have to haul that, and I had to do this, to Wheatland and dump it, or down to, walk down the valley, you know? And then forever, we would own it, you know? And I mean, I hauled four fifty-five gallon drums from Orville to this one in Wheatland, and we paid $1,000 a barrel.
We are, we are spec, right now, we're speculating, that's, we shouldn't do that.
Well, I don't know.
Press is in the room, we're speculating on something that is not a current requirement.
Not speculating, you know, I always, the bottom line, go to it. And I was calculating, I figured by the budget here, and I asked Kevin, would we authorize this today? Because they like to be paid, this 961,000 plus the 76. The only place that we have the money to pay that is out of capacity fees. Basically.
We have the money to bill the capacity fees.
Yeah, the capacity fee.
We have other places we can pay it also, but that's where the most end that.
Absolutely, that would not bother the budget on this particular thing. So that will bring, say, a million bucks, that will bring our capacity fees balance down to.
Five hundred thousand.
Five hundred thousand, that's what I've got here at this particular point. And then when we go on over here, and you still, you guys don't think it's time to talk to eighteen? Yeah?
Oh, yes, it is.
Oh, yeah.
You don't, I don't think they think it is.
Today, not today.
Well, not today, but how about next week, or the time we meet?
Yeah.
What are we going to talk to eighteen? Because we know that these guys in a year are going to come up with a plant that's going to cost us over $8 billion.
I think we start in September, Doug.
Okay.
We'll start in September.
We had planned on requesting a rate analysis committee be formed at the next board meeting.
Okay, that sounds good, so I've done a lot of pencil work on this involving Kevin, and we won't worry about it today. But what we're basically doing, when we approve this, and I'm ready to vote in favor of approving it, so I'm not talking negative on here, we are depleting our capacity fees, down to half a million dollars. That's what we're doing. And we could do that legally and all that.
That's what they're there for. And just for clarification on what Lauren was saying, there's not a whole lot of mud that comes into the treatment plant, because we go through the Magalia bypass. So most of the stuff that they're talking about in sludge is stuff that we put in there, correct me if I'm wrong.
Talking about aluminum, if we had to calculate how much aluminum, we could probably come up with a number based on the chemical dosage we use and what we use in a year, we could come up with a reasonable number.
But the rest of the sludge is stuff that we use, the settling agents that we use.
It's dirt, it's mostly dirt.
Yeah, okay. Okay.
Dirt to clean our water?
No, it's mostly dirt.
Just coming through, just coming through in the water. That's why I want some clarification on whether or not we're getting.
What I tell you, the San Juan, San Juan, with the belt press, they're talking about turbidity, there the mud was, remember? I mean, they were running one belt at the time, and we don't even worry that, because of the fact you got to watch the thing, and it's just a belt. You could see the mud, and they dump it in the dump truck, and when they drove off with it, it's mud they're hauling, you know? That's coming out of the water. Yeah, the same thing will happen in a centrifuge, but with this 3,000 Gs, it really takes everything out of it and dumps it into this.
It dewaters it?
And it dewaters it, yeah. I finally figured all that out.
Kevin, did you?
But one of the reasons, I'm ready to vote yes on this, is because I like this, we need to, this, in order for the state to get off our back and we go forward on the thing, it's going to cost us a million bucks. And, you know, and if we want the wetlands, and I think Bill will agree with you on this, that still could be an option when you guys get into this, because you've said that before. You're looking at half a mil, you're looking at five, five million bucks, round figures.
No, it's, yeah.
Yeah, see, so whatever we're talking about, we're talking about big dollars. And so.
Ah, cheap up there.
And the thing that I'm more interested on this is what you find underneath the ground, you know? Because I personally think that whole damn mountain is moving. Because you mentioned that here, that one quarter, one quarter of the tanks, there's seepage and leaks, right? I forgot where it's at in here. And it's one, Jim, it's one of, or Bill, it's one of the tanks up there. And they talk about in one southwest corner, whatever it is, there's seepage and leaks.
Trees or water storage tank?
Water storage tank, yeah.
It's a big concrete tank.
Big concrete, so which means that something's happening in there, because it would be, it wouldn't be leaking.
Let's let the engineer figure it out.
They built it with leaks installed.
Installed.
Yeah, didn't they? It started leaking right after it was up?
The liner failed right after it was up.
Well, let me give one more thing, on that, I guarantee I'll talk. One of the things I said, you know, I wanted to, I would not approve anything until it, because the eighty-three and the ninety-four, they didn't use the technologies they had, you know? See, and we're paying for it right now, okay? They did the best they could and all this. But in 2014 or 2015, I was hoping that we could do something that would solve the problem for a long time. And maybe twenty or thirty years is as long. But I think we're closer to solving that problem for a long time than we've been for quite some time.
Hindsight is always twenty twenty.
Oh, I said, I've won a lot of football games with hindsight.
Kevin, did you want to say something?
Clarification, this is not to exceed contract, then you'd be right enough.
There will be, we're looking at.
Oh, yeah, then you'll be starting.
The max trial.
And that all charges will be actual charges. So if the hours, estimated hours come underneath, then the price obviously will be less than what's in the contract. And that, like, this includes travel, all of that, that's what I need, it's included in the contract. Right, okay. And it will only be charged at rates that are shown in hazard curve. But if we don't, if we don't, there's, there's what's referred to as an other direct cost, which would include travel and that sort of production of documents and that right or thing. If we don't use that, we're not going to bill you. But if you used all of your money and then you still have to travel, therefore, we're not going to be paying for it. Correct, in addition to that.
I think there's.
That is, I think, just, just to make sure we're all clear, that is why we went through this process of trying to vet the scope. Because as you can see, it is rather complicated. There are a lot of activities that have to take place, and to be able to identify what those are and post them, took a lot of effort. And I think we're in a position, there, there is the, the potential that the geotechnical investigation may present something, but we want to know that upfront. We don't want to find that out after we've committed to a whole array of design activities and find that we have to go back and redo that. So that would be one of the first quarters of business is to get out there and get this done.
Oh, the geo.
Yeah, and find out what it is, you know, this going on.
You know, we could be talking a big cost of making that stable.
Right.
And that's what you've got to find out.
If we find out that there is some issue that really was not anticipated in this design proposal, then we need to stop right there. We're not going to expend funds on things that may be influenced by that. We'll regroup, we'll work with staff to come up with a modified proposal that you can then agree on before we go through.
The, the proposed motion, does that include the 961, 469, and the 76, 779? Or just page one, the project budget, not the alternative ads?
I, I, I think I would just throw it as, as proposed, including additional components.
I've got a million thirty-eight thousand two hundred and forty-two. Anybody else do the math yet?
No, because we, as in not exceed, I, I figured that the dollar amount would be decided by the manager, that's what we're authorizing.
Now, just as you mentioned, the Kevin asked, any travel or any of that stuff is covered as part of, as part of your nine million dol, or your one, nine hundred thousand dollars, million dollars.
Including those, no, not the trips to Hawaii, sir.
Tom still retains his sense of humor after all this, I know, nice.
You didn't, you didn't cross all the Ts though, in this other direct expenses? In blueprint, you left the T out.
Oh. Did you have the same thing out or?
It's, it's not in there at all, so it didn't get crossed either.
Well, as I hopefully have put across, I feel very comfortable having the engineer further we have. You folks.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Any other further discussion? I entertain a motion.
Mr. President, I'm going to move to approve, to authorize the general manager to execute an agreement subject to legal counsel's review and approval with AECOM for design services of alternative three, and.
Additional components identified.
And the additional components identified in the process water recycle project not to exceed $1,038,242 total.
Doug, I thought you would want to second that.
I'll second that.
I was going to let Bill second it.
Oh, Bill can second it.
Doug has been telling me. Let's check the math, CFO.
Hey, two of us came up with $1,038,242.
Although my focus at this point is not, on these little teeny numbers is not great, so.
Check the number.
Last three are 672.
Nine, six, one, is that four, six, nine?
And one point, $1,038,242.
That's what I said.
Three against two back there, you guys lose.
Three against two, I can add.
Did somebody second it?
Yes, I seconded.
You seconded, okay.
We good on, we good on that dollar amount then?
Any further discussion? Right, okay. Okay.
Mine's big. Big counts.
No further discussion, roll call please.
Yes.
Vice President Hill?
Yes.
Director Flesher?
Yes.
Director Kellow?
Yes.
President Becker?
Yes, passes unanimously. Okay, director comments. Thank you very much.
Thank you, everybody, for taking out of your busy workday, we appreciate it.
The opportunity, we're going to take care of you guys.
Thank you, Tom.
Looking forward to working with you, really, Joe.
Okay, Bill, director's comments.
Well, where I originally came from, Tom, if you said I'm going to take care of you, that's a different meaning.
I'll have to go there and find out. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joe, I see you. Looking forward to working with you over the next year.
And we should save these, so we don't have to reproduce them, we should save these when we do get a construction design.
Bill, any director's comments?
Oh, yeah.
Sorry, I've got a director's comment, yeah.
I'd like to thank you as gentlemen for being kind and considerate and, and taking that ignorance is bliss. And so, because you didn't read the email. Any rate, I really appreciate you guys and the good questions and answerings that everybody did, nobody took after me, so, thank you very much.
Doug?
Well, I'm glad that we, it's a kind of sub-agreement, and I feel very comfortable with it, it's a lot of money, it's, shoot, our capacity fees, but I'm glad to hear that we are going to start working on the 218. And because before I, looking at the budget, before we could spend money the way we normally spend it, in larger, we got to come up with some way to pay for it. And that's what we're going to be doing.
Ken?
Yes, I, I, I have a director comment or two this time. After the last meeting we had, I had occasion to talk to two people that were present during the meeting. One of them was a general member of the public. He stopped by my office a couple days later. And the other one was Lauren Gill, the town manager. I saw her at the, at the party in the park the following evening, I guess, Thursday night. And what I learned from those two encounters, from the general member of the public, he, he was a little bit lost, because we so intimately know what we're discussing, sometimes we don't give any backstory or backfill to the public to bring them up to speed with where we are. So he was pretty confused about the fact that, for example, management who did not need approval to go to this conference had decided, because it was within the budget parameters, to go to the concert, or the, excuse me, conference. And he was a little confused about. And he was a little confused about that. He's, you know, like, well, gee, why are you discussing it if you said you've already made the decision? And I just, you know, kind of took that to heart and thought that we should give concern and consideration to these complex topics we're dealing with. You know, we can't always go back and give a detailed explanation of how we got there. But we should kind of keep that in mind when we're dealing with the public and discussing things with them about why we're at a certain level. From Lauren Gill, what I got out of that was that, and I'm almost going to give a quote. She said that it was very uncomfortable to be sitting out there in the general population with the tenor and the vibrations and the divisiveness that's apparently apparent to everybody that's going on with the board. And she asked me, you know, she, she made some comments about going down to this conference and the type of topics that are coming up, which may be able to help there. But she also was kind enough to make a comment about a person that the town council has used before, communication consultant, that came up in times past when they had some issues there. And it was really a team building type of an effort from an outsider to come in and assist the board in becoming better team players and members and respect for one another and how to work together, still yet having differences of opinion, but not in a, in a confrontational and ugly format. Seemed to make sense to me, I asked her to pass this information along to me, which she did. And I'm going to pass it along to the staff. And perhaps it's something that the board can talk about in a future meeting as to whether we would like to enlist the assistance of somebody like this to come in and give us a review, training, conference, whatever it is. And maybe it will help us conduct our business in a more reasonable format and get along a little bit better and mend some bridges and. So I know that Bill and Doug are always, always very big about public participation and what they have to say and what they have to offer. And I just thought, you know, these two comments coming in made me listen more and thought I'd pass that along. So that's what I'm going to do, is pass this information down. And I may ask that it be brought up at our September regular meeting and let the board consider that. That's my comments.
Seth?
I'm going to reserve comments for right now.
I don't, I, I don't like going to a meeting where it looks like everyone's decided what they're going to do before they got there. And so I do, I, we may disagree here, but I think it's healthy. And to me, you know, I've been on other boards. And when everyone agrees, it just, it doesn't sit well with me. So the thing is, as long as we're civil to each other, I think that's really important. The thing is, is we should not take anything personal. We're all here, we come from different walks of life and we have different agendas. And I've always tried to keep my personal agenda away from my, what I do here. And I think I've done a good job of it. And I think the fact that nobody wanted to run against us in the coming election is, is something in our favor. Meaning that we're working hard to do a good job for the public. That's my comments. Okay, we're adjourned.
Thank you, Laura. Bam, we don't have to vote on that?
Nope.